Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Farmington School Board meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at five thirty. Ask that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sort of simultaneously with tonight's meeting, I'm gonna open up the second of two public hearings that we were required to have. And I will open that public hearing and read to you this. To the town of Farmington residents, you are hereby notified that pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty-two, colon, five dash C on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five thirty P M, Farmington High, uh, the Farmington School Board will be conducting a public hearing for the purpose of the district's receipt of a petition warrant article that reads as following. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA thirty-two, colon, five dash B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body or budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal year's actual amount of local taxes raised by more than one million dollars? The public hearing will take place at the Farmington High School Library, Forty Fair Drive, Farmington, New Hampshire. For those of you that are sort of keeping score, this was a different amount at the prior public hearing. We've since had a deliberative session where there was a movement from the floor to increase that number that was originally listed, I believe it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to one million dollars, by which the majority of the voters that were present at the public hearing, excuse me, at the deliberative session, did vote to raise that to one million dollars. Uh, I'm going to, um, open that and leave it open probably for the duration of this meeting. And that way, if people come in at various times and they wish to speak to this issue, they can. I'll ask if there's anybody now that wants to speak to that issue. Mr. Brown?
Anything I talk about tonight, I memorialized in notes, and I have a copy for the superintendent. First thing in what I'd asked the board to take note of is the actual Article seven. Article seven says, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA thirty-two, colon, five B? No such RSA exists, and that language wasn't in the petition. The language from the petition is exactly the way it is in tonight's notice, thirty-two, colon, five, dash B. The district is only allowed to make amendments to a petition warrant article to correct material defects or grammatical errors. That wasn't a grammatical error, as it's written, that law doesn't exist. Now, I want to talk to about the deliberative session, a whole, and the posting. So, the morning after the posting went up for deliberative, I notified the superintendent that the budget was wrong on the MS twenty-seven form. I made what I thought the correction should be for her to consider. Been since told that the superintendent, uh, had staff go around to all the physical postings and have those changed. However, that posting was never changed on the internet, which is our primary source of communications with our voters. And that posting says zero dollars to be raised by taxation. There's case law called the stay-at-home law. Primarily, that's the law that applies to changing the meaning of warrant articles and that people would stay at home. But I'm guessing any court in New Hampshire would rule that the same principle applies because who's gonna go to a deliberative session when they see a public posting on the internet site that says zero, we're gonna get zero dollars on our school tax bill next year? The public hearing that we're having tonight requires a hearing to be held fifteen days, but not thirty days before the question's to be voted on. It's to be advertised in the local paper seven days prior to circulation. I have a copy of the posting from the newspaper. It was posted six days ago, on the eleventh. Deliberative session, legal opinion? Ask that this be revisited with legal. Because the way the state law is written, any language in a petition warrant article that's mandated by law can't be changed by the deliberative body, period. When I brought that to the attention of the attorney, I got deer in the headlights. We recessed, she made calls, I still think we got a bad decision. I copied the law, and the law starts with a quotation that says, shall we adopt the provisions? And ends with a quotation after the dollar amount contained in the petition warrant article. If the legislative body intended the deliberative session to be able to change that, it wouldn't have included that value in the, in the quotation marks. And shall is a mandate. Additionally, the legislature took additional steps. One of them is the public hearing tonight. Think of any other warrant article before the election that you have to have a public hearing. It's to educate the voter, and the question is simple. Do you agree with the tax cap? Vote yes. If you don't, vote no. And if three-fifths majority vote yes, then it goes into place. In closing, I'm gonna ask the board to take these concerns to legal. Taxpayers shouldn't have to fight inadequacies. I'd ask and supposed questions to counsel. Was the posting of the deliberative session on the S A U website lawful where the MS twenty-seven indicates that the amount of money raised by taxation would be zero? If not, what's the remedy? Was the amendment to the petition warrant article lawful? If not, what was the remedy? Was the petition warrant article placed on the warrant the same as the petition is brought forward by listing the RSA that doesn't exist? If not, what is the remedy? And was tonight's public hearing lawfully posted when the publication of the newspaper indicates a notice of less than seven days' notice? If not, what is the remedy? While the taxpayers have a right to go to D R A and challenge it, we shouldn't have to. We pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to have this done right. And in this case, I don't believe it was. And with that, thank you for your time.
I just wanna get a clear. So, in reference to tonight's public hearing posting, what is it that you're taking exception to?
The, tonight's public hearing has to be posted in a newspaper seven days prior to the hearing.
Okay. Can you stop right there? I believe the decision, the decision was made to post this at the last meeting I was present for, which would have been a month ago. So, the first amount, it was posted because we, we left the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. And then I believe it was Mr. Krasner who pointed out to us that, well, yeah, that got amended from the floor. So, the argument is with the new amount, wasn't, we didn't reach the minimum days posting?
I've got the copy if you wanna see it. And what the copy says is the original publication at Seacoast Online was two eleven, two thousand and twenty-five. And it's seven days prior. So, two eleven and seven is two eighteen, today's the seventeenth.
That's the one with the million dollars listed?
Yes.
Okay. And then, but did you also say that some of the wording here is not correct?
Yeah, the, the, the language that is supposed to be on the warrant article in tonight's posting is correct. It's thirty-two, col- colon, five, dash B.
Okay.
The language on the actual warrant is incorrect and differs from the petition.
So, on the actual Article seven, the warrant article?
Yes. It cites an RSA that doesn't exist.
That RSA doesn't exist.
Guess we get, better get on the horns legal and find out what we do about this.
The, the concern is you may, you may have him say, everything's fine. You may have him say, you've gotta redo a whole re-deliberative process because of the posting with zero tax dollars. Or you may have to say, you've gotta redo the warrant article seven. I don't know. I'm not an attorney, but I can tell you there's questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the public hearing tonight? Or any other public participation?
Just wanna make a quick comment because I can't stay to the end. I started tonight's agenda, the posting about the posting the superintendent's position. I don't know what the board's intention is, but I wanna point out a couple of different things that we've been successful with. Number one is when Mrs. Palmeroy was an assistant principal, and I was on the board, her name came forward as a nomination to be nominated as principal. The current momentum or the current practice was to hire principals from the outside. We discussed it as a board, and we made the decision to promote her to principal. A vote that I voted for, that I actually argued for, and I can tell you, as of today, I've never been disappointed. During COVID, we expected learning loss. The board, the administrative team, created a learning loss committee. We came up with a plan. Mrs. Palmeroy took that plan and took ownership of it. She took the middle school from the bottom of the rung on ratings and brought it to the fifty percentile. She is not shy about advocating her opinion. But when she hears a no from the board or from the administration, she accepts that, moves forward, and makes it a positive. We've lost a significant amount of time with leadership in this district. We have leadership. So, before you make a decision on posting, one of the things that this board does that I liked and I tried to do on my board, but we got resistance from the current superintendent, was you have your after-hour conversations. Ask your staff how long it's gonna take them to trust somebody new coming in the district. For your people, for the board, I'd like you to consider, how long is it gonna take a new administrator to learn this district? And to come up with a plan to move us forward? One of the things that I've seen as a taxpayer and not a board member is Mrs. Palmeroy's vision. She spent on the job for six weeks, and I'm hearing principals talking about how they're looking at data, how they're changing programming at the high school to accommodate students that are having a hard time and putting study periods in. I'm hearing different mentalities at the Valley View because all three schools are different, but I'm hearing that under the leadership of Mrs. Palmeroy. She spent a significant amount of time and investment in this district. We have time. Give her the time to shine and then ask two questions. Is she right for the district? And then ask her, did she make the right decision? Is she happy with what she's doing? Let's go to June. Our contracts, I, I doubt this board or any future board will give more than a one-year contract. So, you've got six months now, which she's already accomplished a lot, but it's not a long term to set goals with. Let her stay interim for the six months. Give her the year probationary and then evaluate where we are. If she can accomplish what she's already accomplished and maintain the trust and respect that I see from her peers from the outside, we're golden and we're, we're moving towards the direction of what this district has always wanted to accomplish. So, I'd ask you tonight, if you're discussing that program, please just sit back and think about it. It's not gonna hurt to think about it for two weeks. And I'll give you an example, okay, that I think everybody at the table respects. When I sat on the board, I came in for a meeting, I didn't know a nomination was coming forward. The nomination was for our athletic director and how we were gonna change it because we didn't want a halftime vice principal and a halftime athletic director at the high school. Mr. Moja was nominated. I don't know him from Adam. I know his reputation as an educator. I know his experience in the sports program. And I took the chance to do something different and take somebody that was in-house rather than looking for somebody out of the district for that position. And I think anybody at the table will join me to say, we haven't been disappointed. And I'd ask you to give this woman the same shot at that potential to grow our district, get it to where it needs to be, because we're seeing the light that we haven't seen in a long, long time. Thank you. Sorry.
Normally, I wouldn't respond to that, but I will just say this. I agree with everything you just said, but I also agree that the board has an obligation to legally post it. And we did that also with Mr. Moja's position that you compare it to. So, I, I think you cover yourself when you post it legally. Now, you don't have to interview anybody else that applies, but it's posted legally. I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay. You may know, and you probably do know something that I don't know, but I don't believe you have to post the superintendent position. You may have to post it internally because of the union contract, I'm not sure. But outside of that, I don't see a state law or any D O E regulation that requires you to, to, to post it. I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that if I was in her shoes, that sends a bad message to me. And it, and it sends a bad message to some of the other employees that have been here for, for a long period, period of time. You know, as, as far as moving up. Don't stifle our shining stars with the ability to hit that top step, you know, by necessarily opening the door to the outside, thinking that we're gonna get better. Because we've had, I've done interviews, as you folks have too, thinking that, hey, this is gonna be great, only to be disappointed at the end. And, and we have somebody we know, and that's how you do it. I'm just saying that I don't wanna see great potential basically not work. Thank you.
Any other public participation? With permission from the board, I'm gonna ask that we move, um, the proposed senior activities for the class of two thousand and twenty-five to now, so they don't have to sit through the whole meeting. Not that it wouldn't be important to watch, but probably have better things to do like homework and things of that nature.
Winter carnival activities.
Winter carnival, yes, yeah. I would put it down just a little, that's so that the folks that are watching from home can hear you.
I'm the senior class president, Gaily Nichols, and we have a proposal for our senior trip and a school walk-in. The senior class of two thousand and twenty-five would like to propose a multi-day event for seniors. These events are dedicated to ensure a safe, enjoyable, and responsible celebration of the end of the year. Much thought was given to the events that would be cost-effective but still enjoyable for all. After much planning and consideration, we found a solution that we believe is best suited for our class.
One of these events is?
Can, can I stop you? When you take the mic, and I assume maybe all of you are gonna take a turn, just tell us your name for the record, please.
I am Beth Leonard, senior, senior vice president. One of these events is the senior lock-in. It would take place overnight on May ninth or tenth at the Farmington High School. Administration would be on duty to ensure a safe and responsible evening. Um, and teachers have funds here to take part as chaperone. This, it would be an overnight experience, and we would take part in, and members of the class would take part in various activities, including school, school property movies, video game competitions, senior tile painting, snacks, team building activities, and set up a senior prank. Members of the class will be required to turn a permission slip form. And because this event is an overnight activity, students will not be permitted to drive home by themselves and will need to be picked up by a parent or guardian. During the event, um, we would like to paint some wall tiles in remembrance of the class. It is hoped that this would become a tradition where seniors would paint a tile to leave behind their tile, to leave behind their tile, tiger legacy. And during the night, we would like to set the senior prank. The prank will be pre-approved by administration and will be in accordance with safety guidelines.
For project, it, for project graduation, we decided to do that instead of a senior trip because we decided that for the best, for the, to be able to have the most fun and memorable experience and, but still being cost-effective, going on like a two-day trip somewhere was not the smartest choice. So, um, on the day of graduation, the student, students will arrive back at the high school for project graduation. We have worked with an adventure student's travel and would like to book the following activities. We'll have a magician at the school. We would go to an escape room along with a smash room, and then to end off the night at Dave and Buster's for dinner and games. The event will begin at two P M. at Farmington High School for the magic show. Um, that'll go on for about two hours with like setup and cleanup. And then we will leave on a coach, coach bus, um, to Manchester, New Hampshire to do our set activities. Half of those participating will be dropped off at the, um, escape room with, um, chaperones and, yes, chaperones. And the other half will be going to the escape room with chaperones as well. Once the group has, once each group has finished their activity, they will switch because they are ten minutes apart. And, um, from there, we will go on to Dave and Buster's until midnight and when they close. We will, we will return to Farmington High School around one A. M. in the morning, at which time we can go home. The approximate cost for this is about two hundred and eighty dollars per student. They will need to pay the majority of this, with some costs being covered through the class. We'll be doing fundraising and, um, for the students that aren't able to afford that and would still like to participate. Those attending are required to complete, to complete an acknowledgement and form and release form through adventure student travel. For our chaperones, we have emailed and talked to many teachers in the building, including administration, and there will be a one-to-ten ratio, um, for students to chaperones.
And hello, I am, uh, senior class secretary Jacob Watkins. In closing, the senior class would greatly appreciate being able to participate in these events. We have worked hard over the last four years to fundraise, and this would be a fun way to end our four years at Farmington High School. And we hope that you will consider approving these events as completed by the senior class officers.
Thank you. I, I will start by asking right off the bat. I'm assuming this has advisor, principal, and designate preapproval?
Yes.
Okay. I have one question about the tiles. That's a permanent change to the facility. We've talked with Larry, we've talked with the type of paint we'll use. I mean, just, I guess I just want it.
And are you talking like ceiling tiles? Um, like, I don't understand what a tile is.
Wall tiles as if there's the wall behind you, like, each student will get, right? Each student will get a brick to paint with a pre-approved design by administration.
And then those will all be put together to like make, to create one large tile? Or to just be kind of scattered or?
They'll be on a specific wall that we're given to paint on, and then students will have time during, not during class time, but like an opportunity during like senior privilege to go and paint.
Oh, so it would be like an actual brick?
Yeah, it'd be like on the wall, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh. I thought it was, I.
I thought it was like gonna be an actual tile that was gonna be like cemented to a wall.
I would, yeah, I was, well, I thought it was a ceiling tile, so I'll, that's what I'll say, was my first, uh, thing, but.
Other, other questions from board members?
Um, I just wanna make, obviously, I'm assuming, but I just wanna make sure that all of the senior class was consulted and they, everyone's voice was, was heard and?
Yes, no. Yes, we sent out many Google forms, and we talked to a bunch of students in person during classes and, um, class meetings, to make sure everybody was pretty on board with everything, okay?
Awesome.
Anything else from administration or advisor? Okay, well done.
Very well thought out, very nice.
I really like the thought of, we're gonna stay up all night, so we're gonna need to ride home.
Yes!
I'm not sure that's ever happened before.
I know.
So, I like that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the senior activities as proposed to us, um, at tonight's meeting.
Second up.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle and a second by, uh, Mrs. Parker, any discussion? The only discussion is that we talked to maybe the art teacher, Larry, about the appropriate paint to use. I, I'm not opposed to the painting of it.
Yeah.
We want something that's gonna last long-term, not flake, not be an issue.
Right.
Sorry?
When I go up, I can go on to the tiles, um, first one, like the students that were involved.
Okay.
And for the walls, we had already started talking because that was something that I thought, instead of using these, uh, because there's only so many of those, um, that we have so many bricks and a mural or little tiles for each student, that's money for the next, you know, foreseeable future.
Okay.
But we can look at the paints too.
For those of you viewing from home, that was our principal, um, saying that, that this conversation has already taken place about, uh, what kind of paints to use and, and such, so. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, a call for all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have fun.
Let us know how it goes.
Go that way, go that way.
We'll go down to minutes.
I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, public session, non-public session one, and non-public session two.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
And by Mrs. Parker, discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, on that night, we had two other non-publics, we had four. So, I don't know what those are.
They're in their own folder, and she didn't get them on here. They're, they're ready and will be on the next.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Reports, Farmington High School.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah.
So, just to speak to, uh, one, it's always great to see students stand up here. Last year, we had students who were talking about, um, things that they didn't necessarily approve of or things that were going on, which is good. I mean, that's why we're here, is to listen and try to fix and solve problems, uh, that students are seeing this year. Obviously, we have students that are kind of promoting, you know, things for the senior class and trying to do things outside the box to save money. We all know money's really tight at the moment. And any, any kind of fun that they could have without being super expensive, so that everyone can be involved, is great. Uh, with the tiles, just for people that couldn't hear me, um, the tiles for the ceiling, we didn't have a lot of students that were interested, but I had asked. He, uh, Larry had looked into making sure that there wasn't a problem with doing them, so he's okay with that. But if we weren't gonna be able to do that, we did start talking about the tiles on the wall. I think that's actually a, a neat idea. Um, I don't know where they're thinking, but, uh, the, like, the stairwells was the first place I was thinking. They kind of decorate those, they're so, eh. But, uh, paint-wise, I'll, I'll talk with Larry and get that paint down. Uh, he was okay with it at the time, so. Uh, that was a while ago, though. I had talked to him months ago about that, so it's nice to see that they're kind of taking those, um, things and kind of running with them. Uh, for my report, the first thing that, uh, I wanted to kind of talk about was grades. So, grades still are an issue. We are definitely very aware of that. The amount of, um, students who are, uh, need of extra help, um, you know, it stays about the same. We've been pretty consistent with, uh, our numbers from last year. And as Mr. Brown has said, standing up here, we are constantly looking for ways to kind of figure out what we need to do. So, the, the graph that I, uh, shared with you was really kind of what the teachers are seeing in classes. And, you know, some of that stuff, like apathy and disinterest and cell phone use, these are things that we obviously have to combat with, uh, everyday students. The students are definitely exposed to a lot of different media and, um, fast takes on things. And to be in a class for seventy minutes this year. The students are definitely exposed to a lot of different media and, um, fast takes on things and to be in a class for seventy minutes this year, um, eighty minutes last year is a long time for a student. So it's how do we get that, that engagement? Um, and get them to not want to leave class or show excitement. And a lot of this is, uh, you know, it, uh, Mr. Brown also talked about COVID. Um, it's, it is a battle that they've been confronting for the last, uh, four years, um, five years now and, uh, though we are, you know, well away from that year that was kind of tumultuous, uh, we are still trying to figure out what it is that the students missed and need to kind of gain. So we've put in place a lot of different programs this year to kind of combat that. Uh, we've, as I've talked before, we've done after school, we've done study halls. Um, we have advisory, uh, and we're always tweaking all of those. We're also looking at having someone come in. Um, who is working with, uh, Mrs. Farley, who was, uh, working with the senior class here, um, trying to figure out N E S C, uh, P L C. So that the teachers are constantly looking at these items too. Um, and for them, definitely for them, they're the ones that have to, excuse me, have to really work with the, the students, obviously being in their classes. So it's how is it that they can overcome this, um, disinterest, I guess, in, in what's going on around them and, you know, it, it's just a lot of stuff. So we're, we're constantly thinking of, uh, the next step. Uh, we're looking at, uh, absences. So, you know, every week we talk to the S R Os about truancy. We, we try to figure out what students, where they're at, what's going on. If we see a trend starting to rise, why is that happening? Um, so I think it's just little steps and I think one of the things that I've noticed and, you know, hopefully staff and others have noticed is there's just a different feel in the air of the, the building itself. And, um, you know, I don't know, truancy wise, it would be interesting to see the numbers if some of those have changed. I mean, you're always gonna have certain students that are out, uh, and it could be for a multitude of reasons, but, um, some of the students that I was dealing with last year, I'm not dealing with this year and we have a different relationship this year and we talk differently to each other. And I think that just grows as consistency, consistency stays within the building. Um, so, yes, we're very mindful of grades. Um, you know, I don't like to see anyone, um, who's not doing well. Uh, one idea I have is to kind of grab all the students that are fifty percent, uh, or below sixty to fifty and see if we can get them into a, um, some kind of recovery class now so that we're not waiting for summer where the whole class is lost. Um, and kind of fixing those, those little things. And, um, we do have an after school program, so that would be a great place for a student to be able to pop into to do that now. Um, or taking a study hall and moving some of those kids out into their own area, pulling them to an area and having them work on those things so that we can recover grades faster, um, in a more real time scenario. So i- it's not, it's not that we're blind to it. We're definitely trying to figure out how we can improve. Um, I think there's, you know, obviously any suggestions when we're talking with staff and, uh, outside help, uh, my own mentor, we're always constantly looking. Um, I think as we build this culture up, I think that, and you'll see it this week, the, um, if you were to come in, the excitement today, when, um, the sophomores found out what their theme was for winter carnival, they were ecstatic. I don't know, they were super excited about under the sea. So, uh, it was amazing how excited they got to about a theme, but they were definitely excited and it's good to see, uh, that they were definitely looking forward to something. And that's what we're hoping to do is have them constantly coming in and looking forward to something. And then obviously goal wise, knowing that whatever their next steps are, we've got them prepared for it. So we're conscious of that. Sorry, I didn't mean to go on so long. Um, then March eleventh, uh, we do have the, the P D with the gentleman that's coming in to help out with the N E S C, so we're looking at success. Uh, we're also looking at those, um, the things that we brought up before or I brought up about the, who the teachers know and, um, or feel have, um, relationships with. And then the students back. So they're coming in, uh, programs of stu-, program of studies. Uh, Ms. McGlinchey shared with you, uh, the, it's like a flipbook version of the, um, program of studies. So everything is, uh, good in there, uh, except for, there's a little tweaking about the plane project that we're still trying to figure out, um, credit wise. They were close to it, but I wasn't sure where they landed, so I think it's done, but I'm not sure. Uh, so that should be good to go if you guys need to approve it tonight. Uh, the only thing that would be affected was that credits and we can tell you if it changes from what it's on there. And then L R T C, um, they came in, I think it was last week, did a presentation, uh, got a lot of signups for interest in going to visit. Uh, I don't know what that says for our numbers for next year, but it's always good to have, um, kids looking for, students looking for a different, uh, type of program for them. And L R T C does that for, for our student population. So, and then I think sometime in, I wanna say it's April, they're planning on going on that trip. We're trying to do it earlier this year because we got out so late last year. Uh, upcoming plane project events, there are some events in March, uh, for like night activities where, uh, they're hoping to get like mentors in to kind of talk to them and start to round out who our mentors will be for the program. Uh, we're looking probably about fifteen, that might be a lot for us, but, um, you know, the more the better because some are out. And then there's other, um, ideas floating about like informational night for parents. We're not quite sure what that would look like or when. Uh, there is informational meetings for the students that are coming up so that the students can learn more about it that are interested. Uh, there's also, um, this week during winter carnival, the, um, plane museum is going to come in. And they're going to, uh, with Mr. Smith, have an activity that was bought from the, um, the, uh, group that's doing this and they're going to be able to do some hands-on stuff during this time so they kind of get that interest going. So we're trying to build that up as we go over the next couple of weeks here and over the next months to get kids interested. Uh, and then obviously at the bottom, uh, winter carnival is this week and, uh, the themes were environments, so it's, should be very interesting. I'll try to get some pictures of those hallways for you for this year. Um, and then upcoming fundraisers in March, there is another bingo night in March. And I just went to a bingo night and, uh, it's really fun. Uh, you know, it's simple. Uh, they just kind of hand out five cards and you play the game and you can win some candy. Um, and there's raffles and that that you can kind of participate in, but it's just, it's good to see there was some community members here who are just enjoying themselves. And the, uh, students that were kind of running it were joking back and forth with them. So I don't know if they're regulars for the bingo nights or not, but, uh, it was just good to see. And then there is an F hop trivia night. And then there was a, I don't know what the ninth grade night was. I forgot to ask Mr. Adams. But there's also something coming up for a fundraiser for the ninth grade. Sorry, that was a lot.
No, it's all good.
Any questions?
Um, I, uh, sorry. Um. Just kind of going back to, um, like credit recovery.
Yep.
So, for classes that are half-year classes, are we making those students wait until the end of the year for summer school for credit recovery or they're doing it now?
No, that's, well, that's my hope is to kind of get to them sooner. Uh, obviously, the classes that are full year, we're hopeful that somehow they can pull that grade up enough to give the, the passing grade overall. So they might have failed a quarter, um, you know, and that's something we can discuss later about quarter grades. But the idea of, um, the full year, we don't quite know where they're at. Hopefully we can get those grades up. Uh, maybe make up something as we're going, uh, depending on how the teacher works with the student or if there's time to make up, you know, if they're way past that. It might be something that they have to come back around to at a certain time. Um, but the half class, yeah, the, the semester classes themselves, it would be ideal to kind of get some of them made up sooner. Anything below a fifty, you kind of probably don't know the class well enough, but if you were close, um, to that sixty, then what is it that you just didn't seem to do? Was it a unit or something that you need to make up and see if we can kind of recover that sooner?
Right, or was it missing homework assignments and, or, right, like?
Yes, yeah.
And do we have, um, for those students that are kind of in danger on that fifty, sixty mark, um, is there something in place for teachers to be reaching out to parents?
Yeah, so we're constantly reminding, uh, teachers to do that. Uh, Mrs. McGlinchey was also reaching out to them, asking them for forms to see what has been done. Um, it's, it's good to know what steps have been taken. So if those steps, um, aren't working, then we have to obviously increase our efforts on other areas that where the teacher can't do. You know, maybe it's, um, us reaching out and having a parent meeting. It might be, uh, is there a certain, uh, person in the building that they need to go see and talk to and see if we've worked it out? Is there a tutor that's needed? You know, kind of that next level. Uh, so we're not waiting, but I think some of these are kinks on, you know, we got the Power School where we're keeping information. We have emails that are going home and it's making sure all those things are kind of in place for people to see so that we know those things are happening.
And those are able to be documented as, well, in Power School?
Yeah, in Power School, they should be logged, yep.
Okay.
Who initiates the reach out?
Uh, well, so, I mean, it might start off with the teacher reaching out to the student. Uh, if the grade doesn't increase at that point, it might be teacher reaching out to the parent. Um, you know, the parent can always reach out to us if they see that a grade's low, uh, to the, right, to the teacher. So I, you know, I always recommend to, uh, especially in, uh, certain meetings with parents come in, that, you know, every week, if you're worried about a grade, email the teacher because the teacher, it's easier for the teacher to remember to email you back than it is to remember every student. Um, so, you know, if you're, if you're seeing something or if you're worried that that grade is really low or starting to dip, please reach out. I think it, it makes a good communication back and forth, uh, between parent and, and teacher. And then ultimately, as we see the, the higher, you know, like lots of grades, then, um, school counseling and that starts to reach out. We start to have meetings. Um, we try to figure out if there's something more we can do or offer, uh, to get those students, uh, involved.
I'd be interested to see, sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
Um, I know, sorry. Um. Well, you know, you haven't come to a meeting in a hot minute. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Um, I'd be interested to see, I know, right? Um. I brought the heat from Hot Lietta. Um. Of students after semester one with failing grades, how many times, in what ways, parents were reached out to and kind of where, you know, at, at, at the high school, you know, it's, we obviously were trying to get these kids to advocate for themselves and do all the things, but at the end of the day, they're teenagers and.
And I think that's the true road. I think what you're.
And we also want the parental involvement. You can't have it, we can't be saying on one hand, oh, parents don't come to open houses or parents don't, but you're also, so, I, not to say you're not, I'm just saying.
No, I think that's where, I, I think it becomes tricky for the parent. Like, the parent wants to kind of hands off and let them be. At the same time, some students aren't there yet. And it's, you know, making sure that we are doing our due diligence and getting that contact. I will say that, um, Kim has been doing a lot of different, um, forums, trying to figure out what's been, being done. And in the first round, I wanna say it was the first semester, um, contact with parents through phone call was very low. Um, and, you know, some people just don't feel comfortable with that, but in the second round of that, it increased a lot. So I think it's just reminding them that, you know, initial contact through email, sometimes we're not gonna hear back or it's not. Emails only give you a certain idea of what's going on, especially how you write them. You know, you, you think you're being clear, but it might not be as clear as it needs to be through a conversation. Uh, and so it's just doing those little things, uh, making sure the student knows. Sometimes the student's not aware that they've missed something or, you know, I mean, a lot of them are doing things after work, so making sure that they're taking the time to kind of make those things up in study halls and that. So it's, I think, study hall, though it's not a new concept, threw it in this year, trying to give time for both the teachers and the students. It's how are we utilizing it? So we've looked at ideas of advisory might be too long. You might just need a twenty-minute advisory where everyone's checking in. Where do you, what do you need to do? Email your teacher, get pulled today. Twenty minutes goes on to the study hall, so now it's a sixty-minute study hall. And that just gives more time for students to process most of the day of what they've learned. So, again, it, it's minor or tweaks, minor tweaks, it's, uh, us communicating with each other, um, trying to make sure that we build the best schedule, the best, um, structures and supports within the building because, you know, we only got so much resources ourselves, so.
Any others up there?
Well, I was just gonna say, it would be really nice for those kiddos. I mean, teachers, obviously, if they know their students well and they know their, their classes and they know the students that are in danger of failing or at risk, it'd be really nice for those teachers, you know, to obviously have the conversation with the students. But then to follow up with the students and the parents and really encourage them to set up that after school time because although it's there, I know my fifteen-year-old is not gonna be like, hey, mom, I wanna stay after because I'm in danger of failing math, right? Like, so I feel like it would be helpful if more parents knew about that. And I feel like if your kiddo is in danger of that, then I would be more apt to be like, hey, like, I got an email from your teacher, like, we're gonna take, you know, advantage of this after school time to get you some of that help.
And I think it's just changing the mindset of the student too. I, I will say that, um, you know, all, if not, pretty much all the teachers are reaching out.
Yeah.
Um, you know, how consistently, I don't know. That's, that's a different question, uh, or a different answer. The, the idea of the students staying, I know that's not something like, it's not seen here.
Right.
Uh, it's very much a ghost town at three o'clock. And it's a ghost town for students, like they, they're out the door. They don't wanna stay, whatever. I think it's a conversation at, with the parent, but it's also the conversation, the parent with the student saying, look, you really need to stay. And kind of changing that mindset. Like it's, uh, you know, if you do it now, it's not gonna haunt you come summer. Like, why are we waiting for summer to make things up?
But I think if parents don't know that.
Right, no.
Like, I'm speaking for my own son, who was in danger of failing. Like, had I, I'm on the school board, so like I know, but like, had I got an email saying, hey, he's in danger, right? Like, it would have been nice because then I could have been pushing him more to be like, alright, like. And luckily, he took care of it on his own. We had a conversation. I checked Power School, like, we're good. But I'm just saying like, and I know that there are others. So that time's already built in after school. It would just be nice if, if parents were informed by teachers.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's all.
For, for me personally, there's no argument that can be made. I don't wanna hear the whole, well, we want them to become more independent. Uh, yeah, they can do that when they, they're dealing with college professors. There's, there's no argument for me that can be made of how, uh, an F can be placed on a permanent record without parent contact. It shouldn't even be allowed, quite frankly. I mean, I'll go, I'll be, I'll do what I do and annoy people and go back to when I was principal at the elementary school. You didn't put an F on a permanent record until I sat with you and discussed, what did we do to help prevent this? Uh, and I get it, that's at the elementary level, but there was three hundred and fifty students and there's one, there was one of me and there's two of you here and, uh, guidance and other, other resources. But I, because if that trend was occurring, I then worked with that staff member, if I saw a pattern, on, okay, you've got some new goals to work on. Parent communication may be one of them. I, I heard you say some of them may not be as comfortable making the phone call. Get comfortable. Find, find some type of, um,
Script.
professional development opportunity that helps you get comfortable doing that. I just don't think we should abandon that at the high school level. I get that the kids are older, um, but I, I just feel like an F on a report card with zero or very little communication with the parent shouldn't be accepted. It's just me.
I, I fully, fully agree.
And when I said that, I, my, maybe I overspoke, the idea of, I think sometimes the parents want to take that step back, but they realize that some points they can't. So I think it depends on the parent and the student. Teachers, they can't take that step back and give the kids the leeway. Like, we need to make contact. Calling, I will say that has increased from when we first asked, but it was the beginning of the year too, so might, because a lot of them might not have reached out yet. Um, that, I think, if not forced in the past, and I don't know what it was like before I got here, so I don't wanna misspeak and say that they never were told to do it. But if they weren't made to do it at that time, they might be uncomfortable up to this point. So it is.
It's just a good teaching practice.
I, those teachers that give a failing grade on a report card two quarters in a row.
At the se- the second time you, they're putting that grade there.
Should be a red flag.
You're, you're, I would be more upset with myself as a teacher than upset at the student for not holding up their end of the bargain. You know, that, I would, I would leave it as an incomplete and figure out what's going on.
And there are patterns.
Yes.
Any other questions?
You said they're environmental based.
So freshmen were desert, juniors were, hold on, I gotta think what that, jungle, and seniors were space.
Thank you.
I know, that's right.
It's like what each four years were when I was in high school, and now it's like each class, it's goodbye.
Senior surprise should have been desert, because there was very little here, so.
I gave them the input, they got it from me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, lots of good information, thank you.
Henry Wilson.
She had a choice too, and she had so much fun last time, she came back again.
Yay!
Um, so I'll start really quickly with our shout-outs for, for this report. Really want to send a huge public thank you to Fred and Chastity Wentworth, who came down last Friday and did a Super Bowl party with all of the kids. We divided into three groups, they had a variety of different activities. That all culminated in a touchdown dance competition, which was hysterical. And the kids had a blast, they had an absolute blast, like, everybody was engaged, they were having a good time. You know, sometimes we'll have kids sit out because it gets too loud or it gets too overwhelming. We didn't have that at all, everybody wanted to be a part of it and participate, it was wonderful. And Amy Jones was our teacher, who kind of volunteered to take that on and get everything coordinated in the building, and she worked with Fred and Chastity to do that, so it was, it was a lot of fun. Also want to publicly thank Jackson Burke, our school counselor, who does a wonderful job every day. Super calm and super calming demeanor, and his willingness to work with the kids in crisis, not in crisis, just to have a talk, just to get on the right foot every day, it's just wonderful. And he's, she's just a good person to have in our building, so just want to make sure we publicly thank him. And then certainly last but not least, to thank this week, our SROs, who come in every day and they're wonderful, and it's been, it truly has been an absolute honor to work with them personally, never having worked with SROs before. They're great for advice, they're great for bouncing different ideas off of one another, and they work so well with the kids, whether they, we're in a situation or not, they're there for the kids. And I, I just think that the relationships they're building is wonderful, so thank you both for everything that you do for us. Once again, Henry Wilson had a, had a wonderful response to a clear hallway situation due to a medical emergency last week. And again, the staff responded beautifully to the situation following that event. We talked the following morning about what could we do differently next time to make it go even better? And I think that's one of the best things that we do over at Henry Wilson, to just have that conversation, like, immediately following up. This went well, everything went great, we got what we needed, the person with the medical emergency was taken care of. How can we make sure it goes just as smoothly and more smoothly in the future? So that was wonderful again. We had the pleasure of having Chief Fred Mitchell at our staff meeting, and he came over and spoke with us about fire safety and what the, the fire system and the ceiling tiles, and all of the different things that we need to make sure that we're meeting fire code. He actually took the time to go in and individually talk to a couple of teachers who had some questions about how their classroom was set up and organized, and whether or not it was meeting code or not meeting code. And so that was really awesome, and he, he was great to, to have a conversation with. Want to give a shout-out to Mr. Giles, who is in his third year of hosting the chess club. And again, as we reported last month, the theater club and the gaming club are still both highly attended clubs that we have in our building. And again, weekly night, every night of the week, we have a help session. All of our students have the ability to utilize a help session after school. All of our teachers offer that, so that's wonderful. It's Spirit Week at Henry Wilson, today was Twin and Triplet Day, tomorrow's Hat Day. We have a sports team day, a tie day or camo day, and then we have our Tiger Pride Day, so we're looking forward to that. And then kind of some of the struggles, just to kind of end, and really, they're not struggles per se, kind of really more of a celebration, this one, no leaks in the roof this month. No leaky.
Because the ice hasn't melted yet.
No leaky lockers, no puddles in the lockers, so that's been really good. We haven't had the completion of the camera project yet, so we're kind of hope, looking forward to that when it actually comes to fruition. But it's going to be an awesome system, I think, once it gets in there, we just, we're really excited to get that up and running. And then our phones only went out once this month, and it was a really quick fix, so we were really happy about that. So, any questions?
Giselle has been designated.
You know what? They've been, they've been really good. Like, Giselle and I, I think, work really well together, and we just kind of ride the wave, like, up and down. And there's been situations where she's been down at the SAU, and I've kind of sent a text like, I need you, and she's there, you know? And we have such a good staff at Henry Wilson and such a good team that we can do this together because we have that security of all the other people in place, you know, with, with Ms. Hamm and Mrs. Spinelli, and the SROs, and our guidance counselor, and other teachers who jump in, like, it's just a good place to be, and that's the reason that we can do what we're doing right now, and still be sane at the end of the day. So, yeah, I think, I think it's working incredibly well, considering the level of work that she is doing, and I, and, and how hard she's working on a daily basis, so. Thank you for asking. Oh yeah, I'm ready.
I was absent. Just like I was for the fluid situation.
I'm like, I miss the good ones, come on!
She was so upset that she misses the big deals, and, um.
So when Jamie's out, you know something's going to happen.
Something's going to happen. But, like she says, our community at Henry Wilson is so strong, and you know that it's a personal belief that we grow our leaders. So that particular day, Amy Jones was our admin on duty, and we put us up in her room. So, it was just really interesting to see everything fall into place with a very key member missing.
Right.
Um, and, but same token, you've gone through a lot of things where I'm missing, and she's handled it beautifully, and then we debrief, but like, it's really neat to see, just.
I think it's trust.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
I call it baptism by fire, but.
Yeah, sure, sure. I think it is, no, I think you're absolutely right, but I think, I think it is, I think it's trust, you know? And, and Giselle has placed an incredible amount of trust in me and, and my ability to do what I need to do on a daily basis. But also, I trust her and her leadership and what she's done in the, you know, the months leading up to this transition to kind of guide me through, and I'm still reaching out, hey, what do you think about this? Hey, what do you think about this? What are your thoughts about this? And so, I just, I, I do, it's just a good working relationship, and I don't know if I could have done it with some, with another person, you know what I mean?
Me either, quite frankly.
Well, I think it speaks to the, to the building though as well, right? Like, when you have, and, and you guys as well, I'm not saying that, but like, I've always said, like, if you have trust, if you have consistency, and you have clear expectations within a building.
Yes.
You shouldn't have to be there, and things should still be able to, to run and operate, right? Like, if you leave that building, that building should still be able to operate on its own.
Right.
To a, to a degree, you know what I mean? And so that just speaks volumes to the leadership, right? And what you expect from staff and what staff expects, it's just that give-take, so it just speaks to everyone, so.
And I think, you know, again, yeah, our staff is wonderful, and other staff members, other administrators have reached out and offered their support. And we always have, you know, somebody that's willing to come down and, and help if we need somebody, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And while we have a quick pause, I should have known that this one, I opened the meeting, Mrs. Johnson is excused tonight, she's on a vacation.
Somewhere warmer and.
Good for her.
Hello, good evening. Sure and sweet from Valley View this month, it's a short month, it's been busy. Couple of things that were already alluded to is, we have been hit with the plague, and then some. You know, it, it's, I don't remember it being, you know, apart from COVID so bad, but I think we were operating about eighty percent of our attendance with just so many students out, and staff as well, so. Also, kudos to our amazing staff, everyone just jumps in, it's not even a second forethought that everyone's just, how can I help, just takes on more and more, and just, I mean, it's, it feels solid, it feels good, we are such a strong, solid team, and they just continue to deliver the best, you know, educational program to our students. But hopefully, everyone gets a very good reset, and, and gets healthy for sure. So, I think the most exciting thing to finally announce is that Rebecca Huff, our veteran first grade teacher, was nominated New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. Just unbelievably proud of her work, the year after year, just the growth that we're seeing. I mean, numbers don't lie of how much those students grow, it's just mind-boggling. Very deserve it, at any point in time, you walk in her classroom and every student is engaged. And, you know, you could hear a pin drop, because they are just like, her teaching is just solid, and I've never seen the most amazing classroom management. So, there's a process with that, that she has to go through some hoops and things to apply, and then interviews and visits. But, you know, just to be nominated, we're very proud that she's representing the Farmington community. As a veteran teacher that has only worked in Farmington, I believe, about nineteen years, so. All good stuff that, that she's learned in teaching new, new teachers. Also, exciting news is, we were also nominated the Amplify Science of Reading Award for Valley View. Someone nominated us, and that's based on the instructional practices that we started about three years ago, how all of our reading literacy program is aligned and evidence-based. And we're seeing, again, huge growth that the nation is also in turn, turning to science of reading. And, you know, actually, Science of Writing has come out, and the Science of Learning, so, all of those things. Also, exciting this month, we had a wonderful visit with Marty Kelly, it exceeded my expectations. He did such a cute, huge whole school assembly, I mean, the kids were so, so good. And then he was spending so much rich, valuable time in each classroom, doing like, really like, quality writing with them. And got some great pictures, and Marty pulled me aside, Marty, we're on a first-name basis, just by the way. He pulled me aside, and he said, look, I got to tell you, I was telling my wife the other night that I've done this for thirty years, you know, teaching myself, but going into schools, you know, the former decade. And he said, I have never seen kids this well-behaved, this polite, this engaged. And he goes, so keep up the good work, you know, he said, I would love to come back, so. That was so good, and I told our students, because they just make us so proud, and they loved it. And so, kudos to Mrs. Scott for that opportunity of writing that grant, she wasn't even a full-fledged teacher yet. She was a long-term sub, writing a grant to bring this to our kids, so now third grade teacher, kudos to Mrs. Scott. Exciting things for next month, lots of things, you know, our ethos at Valley View is really work hard, play hard, you know? So, it's all about the instruction, it's all about, you know, high expectations, but also, you know, the reward for our students is to have fun, exciting things to look forward to. So we have a Read Across America Week as soon as we get back from vacay, with some weekly activities. Megan Money Penny's coming back to do some writing workshops with the students. We have our Math and Steam Night and Art Show, March twentieth, and PD Day, and my parent coffee chat, which got delayed due to the snow day. So, I've been talking to a few parents who are right on the money with like, wanting to work with us, and reach out and continue that, you know, pro-education of, you know, our kids deserve it, Farmington kids deserve it, our kids deserve the best, what can we do to make that happen? So, that is all I have. Any questions?
Doing great.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, everyone, this is the perfect height. Finally. So, for those of you who do not know who I am, I'm Sergeant Antoni Raffaely, and this is Officer Clark. We are the School Resource Officers for the School District. January was a very good, very busy month for us, and for a lot of admin, I'm sure can agree with that. January was a, was a bumpin' month. Does anybody have any questions for us?
I was just asking Giselle earlier, did we get the, the January report?
Yeah, it's in the folder.
Oh, it's in the folder, okay, usually you email it, so I, I didn't look in the folder, sorry, okay.
I, I usually email it to you, Giselle, I have to get better at emailing it to Katrina, so she has it, because she'll usually attach me on the principal's one, but I gotta, I gotta start making sure I put her on it as well, the first round.
Thank you. I will just echo, Jamie was up there, first of all, Happy SRO Appreciation Day, which I guess is Saturday, according to the report. But I did actually mention in my annual report that the chair has to write for the School District Report that will come out prior to elections, and that the townspeople can look at. I mentioned the, the strength of relationship between the district and the SROs, which I believe has, has also helped strengthen our relationship with the town itself.
Absolutely.
Town departments, and, and chief is a big part of that, obviously, well, as well. I think we're, we're enjoying right now a very strong link between the town and the school, which for some time wasn't there. So it's, it's good to see, so thank you, you're a part, a big part of that.
Thank you, yeah, and I mean, you have great staff and great administrators that make that easier for us when the communication is open like that. And like Jamie mentioned, we do bounce ideas off of each other, and it's, it's an open dialogue. It's not like, we're here, now what? It's kind of a working relationship as things are unfolding, and that honestly makes it a lot easier for us, because we can give feedback along the way, instead of, well, maybe we could have done it this way until we, so it's. Yes, exactly, so yeah, that's a big thank you to the staff and the administrators that you have as well.
Any questions for the SROs?
Any pictures of the SRO's touchdown dance, or? Next time, next time.
No, right now, right now.
Can, can you attach a video, it's not, I don't know, that seems a little.
File was too big to come through.
Yes, yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Uh, the other can grab some, yes, and they already emailed Sharon and I and talked about it, so it should be pretty quick.
Okay. So we have policies?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Came about after our recent visit with the State Department of Ed on a fiscal monitoring view of our title and IDEA funds, E-S-E-A, I think. And overall, everything was fine, we were just a little out of date on some of our policies. So, this adds in some wording, I think, on two of them, and then two of them are brand-new ones that we just didn't have. I, I think the biggest one was there was a gun-free campus requirement here that we copied to our policies from the Fed. So, we're just updating our policies to stay in line with that. We created some drafts and shared them with the Policy Committee, Sharon and Nicole, who took the time to review that and gave us the thumbs up.
I thought, am I wrong in saying that the only new one I thought was the J-I-C-I? Am I incorrect?
You could be right, you're right, actually, because I see four here now, but two of them are related, they're both purchasing.
Right.
I didn't know which one to add the wording into, so I added it to both.
Okay.
One was the bid policy, and one is the, just like the general purchasing outline, which doesn't say a whole lot, so I wanted to make sure it was clear that we want to purchase domestically.
Right, and it hadn't been visited for a while, so.
Right, and it hadn't been visited for a while, so.
Does the board want to take each one?
Well, I think the new one we have to do as a first read, right? Like, okay, so I will go ahead and make a motion to, um, accept the amendments and updates for policies ABD, DJE, and DJB as presented and reviewed by the policy committee, including the SAU staff.
Final read?
As a final read. Yep, sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Here it says ADB and here it says ABD. So I just want to make sure that whatever we're voting in is.
Yeah, I think it is ADB.
It's ADB. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
No, 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 it's not. No, it's ABD. It's ABD. I'm sorry. It's reading it. It's ABD. Okay.
So that just needs to be corrected.
Yeah, I think it's just the title that's incorrect because it's ABD on the actual policy.
Let me just make sure.
ABD, yep.
Yeah.
And there were no major changes.
The way it was named was incorrect. Right.
On the.
Right.
The way it was saved as.
Oh, okay.
Um, they just added, so for ABD, it was the drug-free workplace. So the updates were like the use of tobacco pri, uh, prices. Hope not. Products. Um, so it's talking about like all your like vape, so like your e-cigarettes, your e-liquids, like all of that. Um, am I incorrect in stating that?
That's all that I saw.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add that announcing that at the end of the year has been huge?
Yeah.
We have not had vape detectors go off.
Yeah.
We're very transparent. There are vape detectors in our bathrooms.
And they used to go off.
Violators will be asked to leave. Like it has been tremendous.
Good.
So I like the fact that we started announcing.
Yeah. Um, so yes, it should read ABD.
Okay.
It's just the title and the PDF is.
We have a motion and a second to accept those changes on those three policies. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, if you take a look at the policy, um, J I C I, that's the weapons on school property. So that is one that we did not have. Um, so that one was taken, Matt, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was just the, um, the boiler template.
I just ripped it right off, yeah.
Exactly.
From what she gave us.
Yep. So, which comes straight from New Hampshire School Board Association as well. So we just referenced it and checked in to see if a few other schools like had it and what it was and if there was any differences. And there was not. Um, so that legally needs to be added. So I would like to make a motion to, uh, adopt policy J I C I as a first read this evening and review it at our next meeting for a final read.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey. Discussion? Are we not all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So we can just make sure it's on the next meeting.
I got it.
Perfect.
Oh, locked.
Unfinished business program of studies.
So Katrina should have emailed you the Word document on that so you could see it because when she uploaded it as a Google Doc or something, it just didn't transfer great.
Well, Kim sent it earlier too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I love, and Kim has that little flip book thing too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So cute.
Yeah, nice. How, how is the board feeling about this document and whether to adopt it?
I run in and am comfortable.
Uh huh.
Want to make that motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the program of studies. Is it yearly that we do this?
Yes.
Okay, for the school year, twenty five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Motion by Mrs. Parker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey. Further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
The school board or school report draft.
Annual report.
Annual reports, sorry.
Oh, no. Sorry. Um.
The annual school report draft.
Email to you too from Katrina.
Okay.
And that should have been like on Friday. Um, there were still a couple of things we had needed and everything's in now to us to my knowledge. I didn't get anything from.
I didn't get anything.
It wasn't in our, um, like the board folder for tonight either.
Right.
But if you have it.
Well. I'm hopefully going to send it right now.
She said she would just update her copy.
Okay, I'll forward it to you guys. She did send it to me.
Okay, you can forward that. We'll, we'll jump down on the agenda and we will be back in public after non-public, if we need to adopt it. Were you planning on us adopting it tonight, probably?
Yes, we can send it to the printer.
I did notice one thing on my report that I want to add.
Okay.
A statement, just one sentence that I should have had in there and I didn't. So.
What?
And it, it does, oh, did you just send that?
I just forwarded it.
Ah, okay. Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it while we're dealing with other things. Uh, actually, the superintendent posting, I, prior to Mr. Brown even speaking about it tonight, I, uh, had forgotten that, uh, Mrs. Johnson was not going to be here tonight. Uh, I'd really like to, um, put this on the next agenda so that she's here.
Okay.
Um, she, I forwarded you some information that she had, but I'd like her to weigh in on it too when we, when we talk about it.
That's fair.
For the public to hear too.
Yes.
Um, so why don't we just move that to the next agenda? Oh, I already did. Okay. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak about the content of the public hearing, which would be the petition warrant article that was now raised to a tax cap of one million dollars since we had deliberative session? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to participate in public participation in general? I will. I'll just put a plug out there that, um, this Saturday, the twenty-second, um, the Farmington Athletic Boosters is hosting the forty-fourth annual, uh, JV basketball tournament. Eight teams. It's a one-day wonder. It starts at eight and ends around eight-thirty. So, so it's a twelve-hour day. Um, like I said, eight teams from Division Four, uh, will participate. This is a, this is a tournament that was started many, many years ago by members of the Five Hundred, Five Hundred Club. Um, and, you know, it's sort of, over the years, it has shifted and changed hands and that they wanted to host less high school tournaments and more of their sort of age group that they service. So the boosters took it over and ran it. But it's amazing when you think that a JV tournament could last forty-four years. You know?
Awesome.
And I will say, we try to host a, a girls', uh, JV tournament every year, but the, the problem now is, um, there are very few JV girls' teams in Division Four. They've just fallen off the map. So it's very hard to host them. Um, and the rules at the NHIA is that you can't host other classes. You only can host within your class unless your division, I say class, I meant division, unless your division coincides the same dates with other divisions and they no longer do. They used to. Sometimes three and four would run together and they don't anymore. So it's just been difficult. We've put feelers out every year. Um, we did find a little small one in, in, uh, Woodsville that our girls are going to go to on Saturday. So we wish them luck too. And of course, our boys will be participating in, in the one this weekend. So we encourage people to come out and support them. Um, having no other public participation, we have manifest to sign. Um, our next meeting, oh, the date's not on there. It's gonna be.
What's the question?
March.
Third. It'll be March third.
That's the first Monday.
Yeah.
Ooh, and our next one will be March seventeenth, same holidays day.
And while we're on that topic, actually too, with, uh, this week with the high school basketball season wrapping up, um, we don't know yet. It all depends on where our teams fall, but, um, February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are the first round of the tournament for the boys and the girls. And if they end up in the top eight, they'll host games here. If not, we'll be on the road. But both will make the tournament, which is great. So anyway, uh, I will entertain, so our next meeting is March third. Oh, and I'll close, officially close the public hearing. Uh, and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Parker. Uh, thank you to those of you who joined us tonight from home and those of you that came out. Uh, all those in favor?
Into our senior class.
Oh, yes. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, folks.
Good night.